You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 28th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Rental Inspection and Landlord Assistance Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Yeah, they broke my fence.
Let me know here. Are you ready?
There's two pictures. First one.
Alright, I'm gonna bring this workshop to start here.
Replace both of them.
This is residential rental registration, some proposed changes and modifications. It's a workshop on June 28th, 2023. And I'm just gonna go over a few things that have been brought up to me, have been discussed with me, and I want to get some feedback from landlords, from council members, and keep working on this. So, this is not in final form at all. As you can tell, this is not an ordinance. This is just like some talking points because the ordinance will not be ready probably for at least a couple of months, if not more, because there's many different moving parts and I'll get into them when we get to it. And, you know, it's just not a very simple thing to say, "I'm gonna do this ordinance on paper and that's it. I have to have all these cooperating parties," and I will try to explain that as we go along. So, the first point, it says one registration per owner. So, that means if an owner has multiple properties or multiple rental properties, they just have to fill out one piece of paper, you know, to register. However, it will be $5 fee per separate parcel. So, if they have multiple parcels, there's a, if they have multiple parcels, they just have to list them all and it's a $5 fee to $100 maximum. So, I thought that's pretty reasonable. Registration form includes the following. So, it's just information about the owner and then information about the owner's agent, either a manager or owner's agent that is within 75 miles of Michigan City. So, if there is some kind of emergency, they can get there with a reasonable amount of time. I mean, I didn't know what number to use. I was gonna say 60 miles, 75 miles. But, I mean, we don't want people living in Colorado getting a call saying, you know, "There's a problem with your house," and they can't get there until, you know, two days later. So, you know, that's kind of a change, but I don't think it's a really extreme change. I think most people either live within 75 miles and are managing their own properties or their manager should be within that. So, since there's only one registration per owner, they're just gonna list all of their properties and the types of apartments, you know, "This is a two-flat, this is a four-unit, this is a whatever, at what address." Trying to simplify this as much as we can. There's also going to be a line potentially where the owner or the owner's agent will sign saying that as far as they know, the building is in compliance with the property maintenance code. And I think there's a typo here. Michigan City has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. So, according to whatever they said, like to the best of their ability, you know, it's in good shape. Alright, so, some of the things that we're going to try to help the landlords with is once you are registered, you will have a limited license to do building maintenance work that's repair or replace without getting, you know, a permit or any kind of, anything like that. Like you could replace a faucet, you can replace a toilet, you can change a ceiling fan, you can change a switch. You may not extend or modify, you know, any of these HVAC, electrical or plumbing. So, no extensions. You can't say, "Well, I'd like to heat this little room on my porch. I'm just gonna extend." No, that's beyond the scope of this. But, we've heard from people that were complaining that, you know, "I can replace a light switch, you know, why should I have to go through all kinds of paperwork and regumeral to do that?" So, you will have a limited license to perform building maintenance or your agent, your agents as well, whoever you assign. Up to $3,000. So, part B, it's up to $3,000. So, in other words, this is a limit that was used in another city. And the reason is this. So, once you do get inspected, because you'll be on a three-year cycle, once every three years, someone's gonna come take a look at your place. When they come in, you know, you see an entire house remodeled or, you know, just massive remodeling. That's too much to be doing without having inspections ongoing and permits, et cetera. But if it's replacing, you know, a sink, replacing a toilet, replacing a light fixture, something like that, door, you know, something that you could do and you don't want to have to hire someone or get a permit. So, I mean, I think that's kind of beneficial to all the landlords because, again, I have at least heard a few people complaining that that's a hardship for them. Okay, I'll just go through all this and I'll ask for questions or comments if they're interesting. The registration dates, I'm trying to merge this with the fire registration. My ordinance there, I'm January 31st. I mean, depending on when this passes, we'll open this up. I'm saying December at the latest for sure. And just turn your paperwork in. Here's who owns this property. Here is who you call if there's an emergency. There's really not that much to fill out on that form. And that will be the same thing as the fire register. Found out, some people were saying, "Well, we're registered with the fire department, but, I mean, I heard a statistic that less than 40% of the rental units are registered with the fire department." So, it's not an abundance at all. And so, we don't have information on how to communicate with people. Alright, I also heard that people, you know, they feel like it's going to be a burden to get the inspections done because, you know, you have tenants. But I think everyone would be very glad to inspect the property between tenants. So, if you have, if you have a tenant that moved out or you've kind of got things ready for a new tenant, call us and even though it's not in your year, your time, or whatever, then they, you know, inspection can be done and then you're good for three years again. So, I think that's very reasonable. I think everybody would like that instead of having to schedule, you know, with the tenants there because it's, that is, that is a little tedious, but once every three years doesn't sound like really a big burden for a business. So, here's the newest part is the health and safety grant. I'm not really sure, you know, I called it there. But I do want to help out the tenant, the landlords that are just, they are probably afraid they're not gonna pass the minimum housing standard inspection. There's gotta be something like that. So, I thought, "Well, you know, what can we do to help them out?" You know, maybe give them a grant to do health and safety improvements. So, this is not, you know, to paint the house necessarily on the outside, but if there's a missing window, if there's a door that doesn't work, if there's a hole in the roof you want to patch, if there's some gutters that need a little bit of repair, something like that, so that you can bring that house up to minimum housing standards and then it will pass. And this would be a forgivable grant. I don't know a lot of these numbers. This is the numbers I just came up with. I think 5,000 is a reasonable amount. Like you could get some stuff done, especially if you do a little for yourself, et cetera. And so, it's gonna be first come, first served. So, as soon as you have it done, it's gonna be a reimbursable program. So, in other words, once you've spent the money on the window or contractor or whatever, you turn in your receipts and that's when you get the money. So, up to 5,000 per landlord. So, it doesn't matter if you own 10 properties or one, each landlord gets one shot at this. So, you know, it's just, it's to help especially the ones, like I say, that are probably a little bit worried about passing inspection in the first place. So, "How am I gonna fund this?" So, these are the questions that still need to be answered and this is gonna be quite a bit of work yet to do.
Hi Derek, leave a handout here.
So, what I'm trying to do is maybe potentially ask for 200,000 from ARPA to start and then probably Riverboat for the next two years because I'd like to have, like, we're gonna have a three-year cycle for the inspections. So, I thought, "Well, you know, as they're being inspected, if people are kind of maybe worrying about having it pass, every year have these opportunities." So, as soon as you come up with your receipts, you can get, you know, reimbursed.
Yeah, Don, just not to interrupt, are you saying 200,000 dollars a year?
Yes.
Or 200,000 dollars over a three-year period?
No, a year, a year. And that's really not that many properties anyway. I mean, is there gonna get the 5,000 fully or is there some way?
So, you're saying three-quarters of a million dollars over three years is what it costs?
Well, 600, yeah, 600,000, right. Yeah.
So, okay, but about 50% of our housing stock is rental, isn't it? Is that true?
Yes, I found out today. I talked a little bit to the county assessor and I think we have 5,000 something
Yeah.
units in the city.
Yeah.
But a lot of them are multi units.
So, there's
So, there's about 1,900 or so
That apartments.
that are separate parcels.
So, there's about 1,900 rentals.
Yeah. So, it's not gonna be for everybody, you know, like
Right.
And not everyone's gonna wanna do it and not every, like, whatever. I don't know. I don't know about these numbers, but I just wanted to start somewhere and that's up for discussion.
I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, yeah. So, like, I don't have this. So, Don, I mean, that's just a number I'm throwing out. We can discuss it, we can talk about it. It's not gonna be that many properties, but I think it's gonna give a, you know, a little help to some of those landlords who really feel that they're in over their head.
Well, to this point, okay, to this point.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna help the landlords out so they can pass the inspection if that's what they're worried about. Or we're just gonna help them out in general. But then, how about the resident that gets tagged by code enforcement to say, "Hey, you need new gutters. Your gutters have fallen off. Hey, your door is falling in. Okay, your door is falling in. Can I come to..." Is the city gonna give me, Don Perbelinski, $5,000 to make improvements to my house to make it look nice?
I would say that
That's no.
Well, no.
No, I mean, that needs a lot of discussion.
Okay.
But Don, before we, so we can share this, and I think we can share this. So, we have set aside, well, we are gonna set aside about 1. something of the ARPA, 1. something million of ARPA towards housing and part of that can be maintenance for residents. We just haven't, we haven't worked that out because there's not enough money. Some people, so right now, if you're in the urban enterprise zone or you qualify through North Central Community Action, only those people qualify. But what about people who don't live in those areas that can't receive the funding or CDBG? We talked about having, and it's the same program, basically it's the same program that Brian talked about, but how do we use ARPA funding to do something like this for, not only for landlords, but also for residents at the same time? So, that it's not just us for landlords. We want all homes to be safe.
Right.
So, that's residents and. So, I don't think, so I don't think this is just a, this is specifically about that, but we are discussing some type of funding for residents. And even with, and I'll give you an example, even with small businesses. Some of the small businesses told me that it's great that you have a reimbursable grant. I don't have the money upfront, so how am I gonna do that? So, we have, those are things we have to work through to figure out if do we create a a list of contractors who sign onto the program that will get paid directly from the city if a resident needs something because we don't want
It's too complicated.
Right. It's too complicated. But that's something else. He asked the question.
No, no, I'm just saying what I see here. It looks like this is like, it's just my interpretation.
Let me just
But we do a program, but, so let me say this. We do a program now where we do reimbursements. We do that now. It's not, it's not complicated. People come and get reimbursements from the city now that reside in the tip. So, it's not really complicated because we do these programs.
Urban Enterprise got that too.
Yeah, we do these programs now.
Business grants.
This is just different because it'd be for landlords.
Yeah, but it's also requiring passing inspection, right? So, that's different.
That is.
And that is a problem.
Well, Don, let me just mention, yes, this is, this is a rental inspection ordinance, so it is for the landlords here. But as Angie says, we are not opposed to doing more things for people who are homeowners as well.
Okay, I just, somebody just wanted to bring that point up.
Yes, but this is like to a little bit of help because, you know, you heard landlords complaining and screaming that they can't do it or whatever. Well, I mean, is that what you need? You need a little bit of cash to do this? And it's not gonna be a huge amount because I think about 40, 40 people can get this. That's about it.
Right. It says right here, you have to sign an affidavit that your building is up to the code. And you guys don't even know the code. The code is so voluminous, you don't even know it. You have to go to the place, look and see, and then go back and look up the code and see how this is violated. No one knows the code. So, you can't honestly sign that saying, "Yes, it does." No house does.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So
Well, let me finish. I have two more points to finish on. People who are late, you know, we just have to recap some of it. So, the problem is the administration. It is something that's quite tedious. And I did reach out to two places already. I have not heard back from them. This is why this is gonna take a few months. This is not gonna happen July 5th, so you can forget about July 5th. I'm gonna ask for a tabling until we get these things ironed out. Because, for example, that Lake Michigan Community Development Corporation is one possibility or NCAA is another possibility to administer this grant, to do the reimbursements, to do like, to vet the people saying, "Alright, here's what I did. Here are my projects, et cetera." So, you know, I don't have that broken down yet. And we also don't want people to remodel and then do a short-term rental. So, there's gonna be some kind of memo of understanding or something signed so that at least for five years, you have no short-term rentals or else you can pay back $5,000. So, that's what I get so far. So, anyway, back to this. I want to hear your thoughts about this. I mean, besides the thought of, you don't want any inspections, fine. I mean, that's, you know, we've heard that. But we want to bring up the living standard for our renters in the city. That's the whole goal of this. And if landlords being helped is gonna do that, perhaps that's the way to go. So, I'm just here to discuss this with you and to get feedback.
So, here are a couple of questions I have. So, have you, I've seen any cities that have done like as a pilot of voluntary registration upfront? So, the reason why I'm saying that, so, for instance, you got the grant. So, it says the formal challenge included, where they just fill out a basic registration form, right? And it's the owner's information, not the local agent or whatever, and you can get it to the local agent staff. But for, you know, the first year of the pilot, for those who are willing to opt-in and let them opt-in, that opt-in are eligible to participate in some type of program that you're talking about, grant program. Now, with that being said, let's say, let's say you get people who opt-in, they're on the registry, they're on the list or whatever, but then we have some, and they opt-in and they get the permit options and all that. The people that don't opt-in. So, are we saying that, so if we did something like that, they would be under the more restrictive? I don't know if there's, if you've seen anything like that where people opt-in.
I have, I have seen. So, it's called voluntary registration, but somehow they know they're not gonna pass the code. So, I mean, we can do a second, a different, you know, registration where, but then they would be eligible.
But the penalties for things that happen then would be more, if you don't opt-in or, you know
So, you're gonna penalize the people who don't opt-in?
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
No, no, I'm, I'm
Let me, let me, I'm just trying to ask. So, with that program, you know, what did they, did they just say, "If you opt into this, you get more benefits and if you don't, what do you get?" Or?
I think the way it was, it was if you voluntarily sign up, it's $5, but then if you, if they find that you're operating without a license, it's like a big fine. Yeah, it's like two tiers of registration. So, they have something we can address. I mean, we can
But, but if they, so they're penalized if they don't opt-in though?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, that's why I was asking. Is there a way to do a pilot? Just to see if people would voluntarily register versus forcing or?
You know, I gotta ask a question. Don't they already register with the fire department?
No, a lot of them don't. We found out that a lot of
Less than 40% of our rentals are registered.
How many of them know about it? Aren't they receiving notices that they need to register with the fire department? I know in a lot of cities that there's an issue with that. People don't know they have to register with the fire department too.
Well, you know, one of the points I did not put on the sheet, but we need like a flyer for landlords, just basically explaining, you know, what are your responsibilities, what's going on, and probably one for tenants as well. But yes, to have a rule, rules like that. I, today I was looking for Exhibit A from the fire, you know, ordinance to see like what information do they ask for that I'm not asking for? And I couldn't find it. It said Exhibit A is not attached during, on the ordinance and so I couldn't find it on the fire department website either. So, that is a great point, that we don't have a great information system on like a website to go to, like, "Here's what you need to do as a landlord or a handout," or something like that because
I have to tell you, I called the fire department when I did receive in the mail the request or the form to register that we have smoke detectors. That's primarily the purpose of the administration. And when I called the fireman and I talked to him, he said, "Well, it's really not, you know, it's not necessary that you do what we'd like you to." So, their feedback was, you know, it's kind of voluntary. Right, and the other thing is they don't pass that information on to the city council, right? So, that's another thing is those two departments aren't really
So, the fire department contacted you?
No, I called them.
Okay.
How did they send you the, about the registration?
Came in, I think it might have come from my water bill. I can't remember how I got it.
So, okay, so they sent you the registration, but yet they don't have any information about getting the registration. That's, that's why, so something, something needs to happen. There's a disconnect with all the departments in the city as far as the registration goes, okay? But a lot of people are saying that they register when they don't because we did take a poll with the fire department. We did, we did, she talked to the tax assessors and something like that. Not everybody is doing what they say they are doing. So, unless like a, how many of you get a water bill from your, for your tenants?
I mean, what?
Do you pay your water bill for tenants?
I always get, I always pay the water for my tenants.
You get the water bill or the tenants to get the water bill?
I always pay for the water for my, for my
I'm just asking if that's
You only get to notice if his, if the tenant's
If it's gonna be disconnected or something.
You have to pass due.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to present the disconnect, to get rid of that disconnect where everybody gets a notification that they have to register on a yearly basis or every three years or how this is gonna go. And that all departments give that information this way. They know whether it's the police department, the fire department, the inspection department because we all have to work together as a city. The house burns down, someone's gotta call our department to find out who owns it or the fire department's gonna look on their records. I get called in because I gotta call CPS or whatever the case may be. I need to know the name of the person that owns the building, say, "The water department, there's a, there's a water break. We need a contact." So, I think the city as a whole needs to get in a system that one registration, and I get, you guys are all mad about different registrations and stuff, but I, and give that, it's information.
I had a second part to that. So, the other part, the other question was, have you seen just where there's a registration and no inspection? And the reason why I'm saying that is that I think the information is more important right now than the inspection. And let me tell you why I'm saying that. So, less than 40% are registered with the fire department. Something happens, we don't know who called. And I'd rather landlords register so that we know we have rental properties and at least have, that information is the most important piece for right now. Because right now, I don't feel like we have the capacity, number one, to handle it. I don't care, even if we're our people, we don't have the systems in place to do it. We don't have a management tool to do it. I mean, we don't, we just, we don't have the capacity. But what we do have the capacity for is for landlords to be able to say, "Hey, I'm registered. I have 10 properties, 15 properties," and still offering incentive of some sort though for this grant or whatever it is to do some, some things in the home. And then build a relationship over time to get to the inspection piece. Because I think just trying to do a full-blown thing, I'd rather just know that. So, I used to belong, I don't know if they still do it. I used to belong to landlords association. And we are friends.
I was all good.
Right. We used, we used to meet on a regular basis.
They don't exist.
I don't, but we shared, but we shared, like, we shared information and we did different things and, you know, whatever. But all I'm saying is if we had some type of landlord list, but that would help people who are moving in and out too. If people are looking for homes right now, they go down to the housing authority and they have a very small list, you know, and I just think, you know, that could be an option. That could be a resource for people that live here, that want to live here and move here too without doing the inspection.
They also register, like, county, county, the tax assessor's office. There's a list of all the houses that landlords have to pay taxes.
Every other year.
And every other year, you do the single units and you look at multiple units. All of that information is there.
We don't necessarily get all of, you know, but how do we get
You do it instead.
It's voluntary. It's voluntary.
No, it's voluntary. If you want the tax rate.
No, no, I know, but I know people do it.
Yes. Oh, right. If you want the tax rate, you do it. So, we do it every year. I think it's a bit overdue.
What, to have a list of landlords?
No, to have a registration.
Well, the registration I can see for the fire department.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There's a prior than what kind and stuff.
But I'm not, I'm talking about not having the inspection, just having the registration.
Let me suggest that you make up a packet from the city whoever would be in charge and take it to the title companies because they know if the title companies, they know if it's a investment property or if it's an owner act because they have to fill out the paperwork for the sales disclosure. And your owner act is on them.
But sales are hap, they're fluid. Sales are fluid. Landlords are not as much. Sales can happen every day.
The tax rate is scary, the bottom line.
But they're gonna be always in their ears. They're always gonna be on their ears. So, I could buy a house tomorrow and start ripping it out and it's not gonna show up like you said.
And go into the next tax thing, and then they'll just be a half a year behind.
Maybe.
But it's registration. If you go check now, I mean, if everybody go in and get the tax credit on their homes, it's already there.
See, I never had a prime register like for fire and all that and
No.
So, we're saying why not just have one registration? And that's for, you know, just, it's a, it's a fire, rental, whatever. That way, a pipe bust and you out of town, whatever it is. It's almost like a backstop for the landlord, but also a backstop too in case an emergency happens. Just versus the, I'm just saying, the inspection piece is gonna get, it's gonna be a hard, hard sell to get to. I just think that we've gotta start somewhere.
I have to tell you, when I talked to the fire department and he was like, "No, why you do it? You don't have to..." I thought, "Well, I took, not that moment."
And they said, "Do it before the owner flows the line."
That's problematic right there.
That's what I draw from the fire department. They're two blacksmiths.
They're really nice guys.
If we have time, we'll get to it, but
But this is, it's in the ordinance though. It is
Yes, yeah.
But we got a lot of codes. We got codes that are in the ordinance too that we don't have a capacity.
There's technology that could help, you know, like multiple technology that could help register all this and make sure we can, we can communicate between departments. We don't have it. We don't have it here at all. So, you're saying the registration. So, let me just, let's back up. Let's go to a theoretical situation. We have registration and then everyone who registers, they get the limited license to do repair and replace, not in all extent or modify. So, that comes with registration, right? And then, so it's a separate program for the grants. So, that's what I'm saying, like, look, so that
I think the grant program is gonna be just like what it is for any, any resident. It'll be like, their eligibility will be a lot limited than what a resident would get. But at least if they're, if they're coming to us with, and you can list the things that the grant can cover. The grant can cover and then they can apply for it and get reimbursed for it. That way they keep things up to snuff. I think it's just a way to support to some of the things that people
You're violating presidential people's, yes, you are.
Absolutely not, sir.
I'm talking about if you don't, if we don't do inspections, how is that a violation?
I had no problem going down registering with the fire department at all. I went right down. I registered my properties.
Well, Mr. Ernie, I'm saying
They're saying the end, Mike.
Mr. Ernie, I'm saying without a registration, without an inspection. I'm talking, I'm talking about not doing inspections.
So, I think what you're, you're thinking is the limited liability, what was the, the limited license?
Basically, what it sounds like what she's saying is Number three on page one.
Oh, okay.
Where it says, "If you register your property, a limited license to perform building maintenance work, which is called repair, and or replace. Replace a faucet, replace a toilet, light switch, ceiling fan, something like that."
I guess the owner authority could do that.
Authority to it, without a permit, and without, but then, but see, part of this was, that it's gonna be inspected, right? So, they're inspecting them.
You know, you have, you have to tell me it's an inspection.
That's the part that's really gotta ask you.
If the work is done, it shouldn't be inspected anyways, just to make sure it's okay.
Sure it's done.
Just make sure it's gonna, at that point, I guess what you're wanting to know is, are we gonna inspect the whole house as well?
Oh.
You, you see what I'm saying, I, 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 and I, and I.
I'm stuck on just the registration piece, and not the inspection piece right now. Because I think, I would wanna know all of the rental properties.
Right.
I agree, well, it's cool, the purpose is to try and help some of these tenants who are in these, um, borderline homeless situations. So it's not really for everyone, but this is, the registration is the, the means at this point so far, we're saying.
And the registration is inclusive, right now.
But the grants, you're saying, are for some of the landlords that are really on the edge, right? Of being, you know, I don't know if I can get to that point, but I, I.
When you say on the edge, what do you mean?
What do you mean on the edge?
I mean that if we came up to you right now and said, "We're gonna inspect for minimum living standards," they'd be worried about, "Well, oh, maybe they're not gonna like X, Y, and Z." So if you're in that situation, where like, "Ugh, I'm a little nervous about having them come for minimum housing standards." Maybe you have a broken window, maybe I have a staircase that needs some help, or some, you know, we need a, a landing or something like that fixed. So those, those, you know, I would like to help people like that, that are really close to having a pretty good rental, but just a little bit short.
So what you're, you're, you're putting something in for the landlord where they, I missed it, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's on paper, yeah. So like a grant to fix health and safety gains. For a property that they would be worried wouldn't pass inspection. That's just it, so, I guess maybe the chronology of this is a little backwards, because, you don't inspect first, and then say, "Here's somebody to fix it up," right, I mean, you know.
Excuse me, I know I came in late, but, it appears as if what we, what you wanna do is upgrade the, uh, residents, the living quality in Michigan City.
That's correct.
Okay, and having been a landlord for quite a few years, my opinion is, we need to upgrade our tenants.
I agree with that.
They don't really respect our.
Well, there's a lot of both.
Oh.
There's a lot of, that, that go both ways.
You know, I know, last summer I had a problem with, with the inspection department, it got me to thinking about something. And, I came up with this idea where, why don't you have the tenants, you know, the tenants or people who want to live here actually purchase, or, uh, buy a certificate, or get a permit to rent? You could fund, you can actually fund whatever you wanna do here.
States do it, I don't know, I, I, I used to have to pay occupancy permit.
No, 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 I'm just saying, at which point in time, if you wanna rent in Michigan City, you come up with fifty bucks.
Did it help?
We had, we had to do an occupancy permit.
Well, if you, if, if you fund, if you do it that way, if you wanna rent in Michigan City, and you gotta pay the fifty bucks, the city's gonna come in, they're gonna check out the place, saying that it's okay for you to rent. You rent it, at the end of your tenure, you have the city come back in, they re-inspect it, the landlord doesn't have to pour thousands of dollars into the property every time he changes tenants. Because every time somebody moves out, I gotta put a couple grand back in the property just to get it up where I would wanna live in.
So what's this, so how does permit prevent someone from destroying their property?
Well, you see, the city's gonna come in, they're gonna inspect it.
Right.
The city's gonna come in and inspect it when they move, right?
Okay.
And at which point in time, you, the city, you're not gonna allow them to live anywhere else in Michigan City, until they, until they take care of their.
That's the way, that's the way it works, that's, that was exactly the way.
Okay, at which point in time, it's just like, gee whiz, I have no problems pulling money into the.
They're on the no tenant list.
So, it's a justification of, of, if you're a bad tenant, you're banned from Michigan City altogether. And now, I'm not just, I'm just saying, I'm just not just saying, you're just banned, you're ju, you're judging by the, the type of tenant.
Well, the bottom word is, is, is.
You're gonna just take them out of Michigan.
Or until they take their debt, or until they pay their debt.
How many, how many of you's got repaid debts? So I know a lot of people go for that.
A little bit, one time.
I guess in one percent of the landlords in La Porte County collect on their debt judgment.
Exactly, so now, all we're doing is taking that tenant, making them responsible. So are you taking us to court to testify for you then, at this point? I'm, I'm asking a question, I'm, I'm not.
You know, I'm just saying, I came up with the idea.
Yes.
And I tried to explain it to one of the inspectors, but they couldn't listen to me, but.
You can provide a report.
There, there is merit to it.
Which, which we are providing, reporting?
Because you're going to do two things, you're going to improve the people that are gonna do it, and gee whiz, I had to find this permit, so I'm gonna make sure, I'm gonna take care of this property. Because the city's gonna come back in here when it moves.
So my next question is, let's say they bought this, this, uh, permit, they destroyed your property, and now we gotta come in and re-inspect before you.
Well, there is, it's your property.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get the idea of.
And, and you see, you see, it's a working idea.
Oh, I just, this is a workshop, this is a workshop.
It's a, it's an idea, it's a working, it's a working idea, where it's just like gee whiz, rather than landlords being put their heads on the chopping block. Because I don't go into the property every month.
Right, no, yeah.
And all of a sudden, somebody, they put a hole in the wall, and I don't go for three months. Or when somebody piles garbage up under my back porch for three months. And I walk into the inspection department, I'm one issue, and they go, "Oh, by the way, we meant to call you." And it's like, what for?
Here, here's, so here's my thing, I'm not here to babysing your properties, but that's, you're, you're, you are landlord. And you should be, you should be, in a whole reality, you drive by your house, and you gotta check it. George is in town all the time, I see him going over.
No, no, they don't understand that.
He's changing all sorts of different vehicles out when he's on the way, but I know he's around, he's watching his property and stuff.
But the whole point is, so, so basically, you don't inspect your own property. You just, you put somebody in there, you just let them go to the end of the term, end of the lease.
No, it's not that I don't inspect my property.
I'm asking.
I do, it's just that I don't get in the apartment to look at the details of the residency.
And I understand that.
I mean, people, you know, people, you know, you end up having somebody, you show up at the door, knocking on the door.
And I never got calls until something broke, and they knocked on the door, and I'm like, oh.
And all of a sudden, you get.
What is all this?
You, you, you.
I'm thinking about what you said about having them have to buy a permit to rent. I, I mean, no, I'm just saying, that's what you said, right?
I'm saying that they give a permit to rent in Michigan City.
And I was just gonna say, when, when I heard it, I started to think, well, what is first, last month's rent security depo, what is that supposed to?
See, I think we might have to look at that, 'cause when we, well, I used to have to.
What is that supposed to?
I had to fill out occupancy.
Well, I'm just saying, if, 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 that's not enough to cover the damage.
Exactly. There was no fee when we had to do our, so when I had to do occupancy permit, I just had to confirm, and this, and I, now I look back, I'm like, that's over, we tried to list everybody who lived with me on that permit, now that I think about it. It wasn't a lease agreement, this is a home I own. I had to get, you know, a list of my.
The more information that you get from a tenant by last week, they're going to.
This was you, the tenant, this was me owning a home, so I'm just saying, there are states that. Do a whole lot, but all I'm saying is, I like.
I'm just throwing it out there, because it's something that could fund this program.
And I'm, I'm trying to understand, that's all.
You know, upgrades the, the quality of tenants that we have in Michigan City. Because I can tell you, I have property on the west side, I have property on the east side, and there's a different quality of people that want to live in each, each part of the town. And it, it depends, you know, it's just.
They still will. How do we get to ground zero though, how do we start?
That's why we got these workshops, so we can come in here, and we can make it fair and equitable to landlords and tenants.
I'm trying to start, so, I, I wanna rent your house tomorrow.
Well, well, yeah, well.
So I want, I wanna rent your house tomorrow. How do I know that your house, I won't look at your house, but as a tenant, are you, is this house gonna be fixed up before I walk in the door? I'm, I'm just asking.
Oh, bottom line, if I show a property, it's in, it's in the prop, it, it is ready to rent, or I will explain to each person what I'm going to do to it, before they even fill out an application. Okay, so, they have a permit from the city that allows me to show it, I'll show it to them, they go, "Okay, I like this place," now they can fill out my, my application.
So, just to, to double back on that, so if we did, let's say, okay, we agreed to do something like that, and we give someone a, a, a rental permit, then I would want them to be a minimum living standard, then.
Well, then, I could definitely need that to be landlord.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, it's just like gee whiz, I know I'm gonna have a quality person in here, because they're not gonna tear it up, or if they've already torn somebody else's place off, then they're not gonna get a permit.
So you only have applications to get the permit?
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's something that you have to work out.
Right.
But you see, it's a different alternative than us battering landlords who are constantly going into debt, because they're, they're rehabbing buildings. I mean, if you have a smoker in a, in a property, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to pay.
Right, so what, so.
After, you're gonna have to pay.
That would happen either without this discussion, if we weren't here, if this never came along.
I have no smoking in my lease.
But I'm just saying, but.
And if they, if they break the lease, then therefore, they can't.
Now, Earl, different area that I wanna talk about.
Should we bring that back to another workshop? 'Cause I think we need to go find some, see if there's some examples of something like this that's in place.
Well, I, I, after being pushed and shoved by the city, I took some extreme notes, and I can bring them next workshop.
Oh, can you, can you, do you, can you?
I have extreme notes about your property too, whether you're a tenant or your, your, I'm just saying, I have notes as well, as long as Julie who took care of that case, and our keeper took that case. And not necessarily the tenants always tear up everything that everybody claims they tore up, it's lack of maintenance and stuff like that.
Over time.
Over time.
That's why grant program would be helpful.
Exactly, and I, I'm all about that, I, I'm all about helping somebody, I'll help, let's, let's help, let's help everybody out here, but let's get to the bottom line, is let's get a registration going.
It's all about the money, when you get in somebody's pocket.
Whether it's a, whether we collect money or not, I can get a set.
I don't know, I'm just saying, the bottom line is, if you get in somebody's pocket, they're gonna be more responsible.
Let me ask this question, on the program that you proposed, so they come.
It's an idea.
Let me, let me just finish, I'm not saying anything bad or good, I'm just explaining my viewpoint.
Sure.
So, I come to see Chris, she gives me a permit to go rent, so I come over to your place, and give you the permit, and say, "Okay, I'd like, I wanna rent here." So then, at the end of a year, some of the walls get tore up, whatever happens, and there's damages. So then, since we issued the permit, is the city then liable? I mean, who fix, no, let me test, so who fixes up the apartment then, from all the damages?
I'm gonna have to, it's my property.
Okay, all right, the city's out of it.
The city's out of it.
All we had to do is issue the permit.
Exactly.
And then, it's up to the city to say, "Okay, you can't go to another place and rent Mr. Dabney's apartment."
Exactly.
This is my next, so we have to flag that apartment then?
I mean, to me, to me what you're doing, to me what you're doing is, okay, maybe something happened in your apartment, okay, some people came over and tore it up, or whatever, whatever the issue was. But now, are you going to tell me I can't go, and maybe I got my life together now, and I got a few more nickels, or I'm gonna go to Mr. Dabney's apartment and rent his apartment? But no, your permit on the last place was bad, so you can't rent.
You know, you will pay the damages that you just caused, or your friends or family just caused. All I keep hearing here, all the time, going after the landlords, going after the landlords.
I'm not going after landlords.
Is there any, any in this for the landlords?
I'm not going after landlords. All I was doing was have.
Yeah, yeah.
It was one of the details. No, you don't need to worry.
I'm just, if you're, as I said, it's what I'm thinking about.
I can pay for the damages they just caused.
Well, it's just like, you're taking them to court, you need to go to court.
And my last two years in Michigan City have been hard. I have gotten hit with so many bad tenants, that were long-term tenants, seventeen years, and all of a sudden, they went bad. Just went nuts, and tore my places up, um, you know, and I'm like here is, go after the landlord, make him do this, make him do that. When are we gonna make these tenants more responsible for their actions, and what it costs us to repair these buildings after they've been in them? If you can get a judgment against them, try to clock that. You know, make them go, take some type of classes how to be a tenant, you know, make them pay for these damages, before they're allowed another place.
Well, usually if they go to court, they get.
I am upping my fingers with the tenants of Michigan City. And I am selling out, and I've been selling out the last number of years.
So I have a question for our attorney, so basically, what's happening, we haven't worked the system out, but let, let's kind of entertain the thought of having this, you know, rental permit. Are we generating a Michigan City blacklist? These people cannot rent in Michigan City, I mean, like, how, what about the legality that Max must hold for that?
The, the only, the only thing that, I mean, it's definitely a different constitutional animal than, uh, than what you deal with when you're looking at inspections of properties. Um, and I think, I think you said, I don't know your name, I'm sorry, but, it's Rudy Crawford, but this is, this is actually the way public housing works.
Right.
Um, if you owe a debt to public housing, or if you are evicted under certain conditions, you do not get public housing until you satisfy it.
That's correct.
Uh, you know, or if, yeah, if you're on an HGV. Um, so, I, I would have to think that there is some precedent for it there. Now, when you translate that into a localized, kind of a localized kingdom, that, um, you know, I mean, public housing has that system in place, but obviously, there's also a lot of incentives in public housing to protect the tenant, and typically, you're dealing with a subsidized federal agency that's managing properties, as opposed to a private landlord. Um.
That's thoughtful.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know whether that would change things or not. I think, I mean, I've obviously written that down, that we would need to take a hard look at that before we considered it. Um, I believe that, um, and I think initially, your eyeball test would be a little bit rough, but that's the case with a lot of this, these types of programs, so I don't think that would be the final say. Um, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm in the camp of something that said you, you would need to look around and see if there's other states, other communities that do it, and then, look at what they have in place, and, and try to figure out, you know, what challenges they've had, and, and how they've been litigated and how it's about.
I'm willing to explore this tent, you know, the, the tenant permit idea, but then those.
Outstanding.
What's that?
I said outstanding.
No, I'm, I'm here to listen and figure out what, what's needed. However, then, I would say those properties do need to be inspected for minimum housing standards.
So they're gonna, what about landlord blacklist?
Well, all that is a level of knowledge, if you go to the courts.in.gov, you can see whether or not someone has a judgment.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
That's number two on my list.
You know, and it helps you with picking.
But you know, people can even get around it.
Yeah, they, like, they might not have, like, a registered, you know, lease or a, in cash, or whatever.
She was a member of class, you know.
What are the problems with landlords, that's my question. We, we took these properties that was off the tax brackets, sitting empty, at least I did, and refurbished them and made them available for renters to rent. It put it back on the tax bracket for you, for the city. I don't understand, you're against the landlords so bad. It's not the landlords, it's, it's the tenants that's destroying these properties, not the landlords.
But in some situations, it is, doesn't matter.
You can't say that, you can't make that flat out.
Yeah, that's a generalization, the problem here, the way that we're here, she's saying is, there are some landlords who are not providing.
Right around town, look over on Willa Ave, how many wrecking houses over there are? And eventually, the bad landlords with those really bad houses, won't be able to rent them up. Just like a restaurant, they have bad food and bad service, you're gonna quit going there, you're gonna put a lot of business. And then somebody like, one of the guys. And then somebody like, one of the guys here at this store will go in and buy that property, rehab it, bring it back up to what it should be.
It's. I disagree with that.
A big, you can't afford.
I disagree. I got people trying to live in vacant housing that's better than some of the landlords, and I got people who live in houses that look like it should be vacant housing. And, or if you want, I could give you every tenant landlord.
Eventually, you're like, why are you doing anything about?
I am doing something about. We're talking, and that's why we're here for.
That's what you need to do.
We're here, that's what we're here for.
Leave us alone and do what you need to do. You're paid, you're paid by my tax dollars.
Can you pass inspection? I'm asking, Arnie, can you pass inspection?
Yes.
Then you won't have to worry about me. That's not the point.
That's not the point, man. It's invasion of my tenants' privacy and mine.
So Sue and I, once we're here, got a meeting, and at the end of that meeting, Sue said, I think this is a great idea, George, to put a claim only on these properties that are fit the description. And then that landlord, they, they're gonna have to be evicted, the tenants are gonna have to be evicted, but then the landlord is not gonna be able to rent again based on the city's actions until they bring that property into the.
And I wouldn't rent it until it was a pen for, that, that would be okay, because we're, we're speaking in absolutes as if it's part of Section Eight program, it won't be a problem. If a tenant is on the program, they won't do any damage. Just briefly, seven years ago, a tenant did Section Eight, sixty-four thousand dollars damages, got to court, got the judgment. They began a payment plan, paid fifty dollars and took that voucher to Atlanta, and that was the end of it. And so, there is ways around it. All you gotta do is leave the state. So, one payment and housing authority, I said, well, tell Atlanta to revoke it, we can't do that. So, there's that. There's no absolute, there's no absolute when it is a Section Eight property that it will pass inspection and we don't need to worry about that. Two Hickory Ridge buildings evacuated by Health Department in Maryville.
Right.
Right? And did you read, seventeen people were displaced.
Correct.
Six of them were Section Eight.
Correct.
So how is that possible that Section Eight failed? Six separate families in the same building.
Because Section Eight is behind on their inspections because for during COVID months, they didn't do inspections.
Right, well, I can't.
And I, I just, I'm just letting you know, and, and I, yeah, I read it that because I, I have to condemn a house in town here and displaced two families at a house. And it's because the landlord, the owner of the property, whoever was maintaining the property is not maintaining the property, it's the exact opposite. We just issued a condemnation, they should be out this week. I'm not gonna disclose location. But we are doing, because I don't wanna see that building Hickory in, I read up on just like that place in Iowa where it collapsed and they had multiple complaints, tenant landlord complaints. Landlord not taking care of it. It was something to do with water draining down, degradation of bricks and everything, structural issues. And we had to have a building collapse and kill people in that. Or that's, we're trying to prevent that here. We're trying to be proactive.
And, and so the best allocation of funds is a targeted approach and with this broad, broad, entire fishnet approach that Sue told me, where you're looking at trying to eradicate five percent of the problems, or five percent of the rentals are a problem. So the other ninety-five percent that are not the problem, we all have to get involved. We all have to spend money. The city has to spend more money in order to pass ninety-five percent of them with no problem to this minimum standard to try to get rid of this five percent. In no other situation or corrective action would you say, let's group everything together to try to get five percent out instead of doing a targeted approach. And I've said it again and again, once you can locate the problem landlord, just like you, you guys already know who it is, the idea that it is just so offensive if they say, you know, I think you're targeting me. Look, so what? This is the code, you haven't followed the code, it is minimum building standards on the outside and we're pursuing this. And in fact, we're gonna revoke your occupancy permit if there was one. If you do that, then, then that's fine, because when I went through Michigan City and I looked up the code violations of certain landlords that they paid, they're still operating as if, and they even paid them. It didn't change anything. So, the, the, the focus should be on drafting the ordinance that does not allow that to continue. Focus on those five percent and you'll see everybody else come around. But involving ninety-five percent of the other people that aren't a problem and having these inspectors walk in and Sue said, I'm not gonna find anything on yours, I know. And that's fine, but you're gonna involve me in this and, and it, it's gonna take time, it's gonna take twenty-seven days to inspect all my places. So, it, I, I don't have twenty-seven days to give. And, and neither does the guy that works at the steel mill or the tenant that works at the steel mill. Or, I can't get off work, but you're saying, no, it's for the good of you. Actually, it, it's not worth that if that is what everybody has to put into it. So, if you could just understand that, no one would put up with being frisked as they leave Meyer because they need to catch the thieves. No, we have security and we, we found that you're the one that put something in your goat and you're the one that gets targeted. And everybody else gets to walk out of the store.
True.
So what's, what's happening with Hickory Ridge and what's happening with that apartment complex in Hobart that they shut down last summer is they're selling.
But, okay, I'm going back to the, everybody walking out of Meyer, but everybody was under the same security system.
But they're not all being frisked.
No, 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 they're not being frisked, they're not being frisked, not everybody's getting frisked. But everybody is, is under the same eye, so that person got caught stealing something, right?
Yep.
So, but even I went through there and didn't steal something, but they were watching me as well.
That's okay.
They were watching her as well, him and everybody else, but then they caught somebody else stealing.
That's what the ordinance does. The ordinance is watching all of us, and then when they see somebody who is falling to the cracks, that's your job to go inspect.
But then when you sit, go on, we.
We all have that same ordinance we have to follow. So I think I can.
Did I finish my, can I finish my?
Or it could be a complaint where you say, hey, you know, I saw that guy take something. Then they would look into that. It doesn't, and they do that. They say, I saw that person do something.
So now, I'm going back to what you said, you said, now do a targeted approach.
Targeted.
I'm standing in line at Meyer, she's standing in line at Meyer, he's standing in line at Meyer, they grabbed me and shaken me down. That's the targeted approach.
It's a targeted approach if they saw you do something.
They have to have probable cause.
Probable cause.
Right.
We're not saying randomly do it. They have security cameras, they have people walking in the store, they have inspectors that drive by and say, that place is a problem.
I was just, I was just making the point that everybody was being watched, everybody.
Everybody is being watched.
Then they saw me steal something, so then I got dinged.
That's already happening at Meyer. They got people all over the place.
And, and that's how they, they, they focus on that.
Targeted approach is not, don't watch me, watch them. Am I getting there?
Sir, sir.
If you're doing something to make them suspect that you're stealing or doing something.
Yeah, I've been following Ross stores, suspected of stealing something, I don't know why, just walking up and down and somebody's following me.
Yeah, I've been following stores too.
I did.
So, you know.
I think the point that George made kinda hits everything right on the, right on, right on the head to me. Because if there's five percent of, or ten percent of landlords that are not following the code book, like it's all black and white. There is a code book, and the city knows who these individuals are. I don't know who they are, because I'm not a landlord and I don't follow that stuff. But, then you go after the bad actors.
Right.
You go after the bad actors, and then the other folks, oh, okay, the city's doing this, I don't know, I better start, I better start cleaning up my stuff a little bit before they start coming to look at me. And you start there, and you take it from there. You know, this whole, to me, this whole wide open approach, just to engage on everybody and get everybody involved, you know, I don't even know, in talking to Sue, I don't know, a month ago, I sat down and talked to her about this thing. And she told me that she doesn't think the inspection department is ready for a program like this. They don't have the means to do this, and, you know, we're just not there. I don't know if Councilwoman Ziegus has had a chance to talk to her in the last month or so, but that's what Sue told me.
On top of that.
Whether her opinion has changed or not, I don't know.
And what happened when we started building, we developed, don't you guys have to be on site?
Yes.
Yeah. So words of time.
So, so here, here's your, okay, so the light right there. Yes, there are certain landlords who have received this form, the tenant landlord complaint form. I have a collection of these for the last five years, okay? And, and maybe we'll just do this, maybe we'll just go through all the tenant landlord complaints, and I keep seeing this landlord, this landlord, this landlord.
That sounds like a great idea.
This landlord. I'm gonna inspect all your properties and keep the good guy, because George, I know for a fact I have never received a tenant landlord complaint from you. How many others have I received tenant landlord complaint from me?
Anytime I have work done on my property inside or out.
This has nothing.
I have to get permits, you come and inspect.
But this is a tenant landlord.
I have been inspected several times. It was inspected when I completed the work.
This has nothing to do with, this is a tenant landlord, this is a tenant landlord complaint form. This is what the tenant comes into when they have issues with the house.
Some of them complain because they're getting evicted.
I always look that up before I enter a house.
Always coming.
And, and here's the thing.
Getting evicted, that's a good thing to do.
But it doesn't work in the opposite way, that if they do make a complaint, they get evicted?
Yes, and that's, and maybe we need, maybe we need to do an ordinance to protect the tenant.
That is what I suggested, that if you go there, that those must be eradicated and fixed before they can rent again. So, while this tenant, that was a retaliatory eviction, uh, that, that has now put that landlord on notice that there will be no renting of this property until it is brought up to this code, and that's fine.
And, and that's, and I, I think that's the best way to go about it, because like I said, I have five years' worth of these in a stockpile. And then maybe that landlord gets the funds. And maybe that landlord does get the funds to help him out with, with preventing this.
There was just a law passed, I believe it went into effect last July, with, uh, it's against the law in Indiana to retaliate against.
The tenants.
Well, of course.
To retaliate against the tenants. So I would try and get a list of pro bono lawyers, legal aid, whoever, and send these tenants.
There's only one pro bono that handles rental assistance, and they come around through East Chicago, Michigan City, South Bend, and stuff like that. There's not a pro bono landlords to take care of it.
I don't know if South Bend will come over here, but I can tell you Notre Dame Law School, and there is, you might wanna check into a program because St. Joe County just was funded, I know ninety-seven thousand, I think more, to pay, they have three attorneys over there that are representing any tenant that wants to be represented.
So I think I got, I think we got the, the, the issue solved. It's like, nobody wants, not all the fish wanna be in the net, they only want the certain fish that stink to be in the net.
And you have to, and so looking through it.
And I got the means to look at it. I already have the data collected for the last five years of those.
Yeah, so those tenant complaints, I'd like to know, like, what, how do they get resolved? Like, what happens? Do they just sit on your desk or?
Well, I, I can, I can issue a lot, my duty is issue a lot, I'm wanting to know what the violations are, or what's along with pitcher, the pitchers or that. And there are some tenants that, majority of tenants, nine times out of ten, they're being in the process of eviction.
So you don't need a ordinance for this.
I already have a tenant landlord complaint, I need something to protect the tenants, that's a legitimate complaint, that they're not gonna get evicted, not gonna get retaliated, not gonna get thing in their lease saying that they're, they're, you know, they can't call code enforcement. It needs to go out in the public, whether it's a water bill, whether it's a flyer, whether it's on public notification, ALCO, Facebook, Michigan City website, that the tenant is gonna be protected to a point, meaning they're not doing this for retaliation against the landlords. We have those type of people out here that there's, there are also maybe some responsibilities on their half. If they tore up the house and it's a disgusting mess inside the house, the sinks aren't clean, they find fecal matter from their animals, there's, you know, there's all sorts of scenarios, grease, cobwebs, stuff. They're gonna get same kind of treatment that the landlord gets, they're gonna get written up with a violation as well and ticketed and going to court. Here with this, I was reading it today, and there's an administrative hearing with the Board of Public Works, so you go in front of the Board of Works on Monday morning, it is broadcasted to the audience of everyone who watches ALCO or Facebook Live, and you're put basically in front of Board of Works to answer why your house is not up to standard or why you're not maintaining the house that you're living in.
I would also add that line, in the letter you send out, add the law that the tenant is protected against retaliation.
That's it.
It's been, it's been around for a while, and I just, and I really sat down, and sometimes you kind of go, because everybody says, oh, this is how you, this is how you do it, you get it, you sit down and really read it. And, and, and it's a scheduled administrative hearing with the Board of Public Works, they issue citations or order condemnation. But we also give a, a notice of violations are not corrected within a certain amount of time before that all happens. And if you're concerned about leases and things, maybe when you have a tenant complaint like that, you talk to the landlord privately, get their side, what's the copy of their lease? You talk to the tenant privately, you know, do they have, you know, rental receipts showing that they've been paying the rent? Because this one could say, I've paid the rent, this one says, no, you haven't. So they, you know, where's the proof in that, that showing that, and, you know, the facts, the documentation too?
Hey, I will make that form part of my lease.
And that's fine. I think that, and it's a great idea, they have an option to complain.
This is part of your lease. Fill it out, take it to the city.
Yep.
Now, go to court.
And take pictures of the place before they go in.
By the way, go to Board of Works. After a notice of violation expired, the code enforcement officer will determine the violations have been adequately resolved. If violations remain, the code enforcement officer will do one or more of the following. One, schedule an administrative hearing with the Board of Public Works and Safety. Two, issue citations, or three, order condemnation.
And those pictures that you showed up in the chamber.
And that's gonna be presented.
Those are the, you know, you condemn those, and now no one else can rent there. So you've eliminated that one.
Yep.
And, and that's, that's perfect.
But, so going forward, do we need any inspections at all? Because I think after that happens, someone buys a property, wants to put it back on the rolls. I mean, it should be inspected before it goes back for habitability, right?
But they would have to.
They would have to.
They would have to, because it was condemned.
They would need permits.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to.
To do the work.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, so does anyone wanna pursue the, the tenant permit idea?
That would be too administrative.
I don't think you don't need it with, with what you're doing.
I think. I need something that, I, I.
See, I'll definitely.
Money and.
I'll bring you my.
I need something that, and some teeth to where a tenant is gonna be protected.
But this system, you may have a certain reason why.
The system is already in place. We've always given everybody a chance to correct the issues and stuff like that, but since we're hearing and we've got complaints, numerous complaints about properties and such, we're gonna do, to, you have this amount of time. You're not gonna leave the house vacant and abandoned, you know, because you don't wanna deal with us. You're gonna have to fix it. Or we're gonna bring you to Board of Works, a public hearing, issue citations, or order condemnation.
Have, have you, have this occurred?
I have thirty, thirty-two oh one, or on Wabash, we have. It was a complaint, we, we condemned, I was there, it was deplorable condition, we brought it to Board of Works, we had it.
Resolved.
Yep. It was, it's been, it's still boarded, but it's finally going through its motion with the foreclosure and stuff, and I think they just issued the final order for a foreclosure. This way now it can go up to REO for, for sale.
Yep, so complaint-based and focused attention to those complaints, and you have five years' worth of, of complaints. So that, when that happens, we, we know we need to, to address that, and nobody else can move in. That's, that's fine.
And, and that is that.
I wanna re, I wanna reiterate the fact that this is not showing up on our next council meeting. This, like she said, this is an ongoing discussion. I mean, obviously, we had some good come out of it. Um, so we don't wanna just jam this thing down, you know, I mean, we're, we're listening to you guys. Um, but she said you wanna.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask to table, so that's what I was gonna ask at our council meeting, to table, until we get some of the details worked out. It's not ready to go at all.
They came up with a very good idea, and we're gonna talk, this is always gonna be our service.
Christine's, that's Christine, you're Christine.
Yeah, but here, here's the other thing, but can we please, at least have all the tenants registered just with us so we have this information? The landlords.
Yes, yes.
So that's the other problem. The one problem is where you just, you're just.
Right, I think, I think we got the one thing is, we're gonna focus on past performance, current performance, and future performance of these landlords by tenant landlord, but we have to protect the tenants. tenant landlord. But the problem is we have to protect the tenants. They're legitimate complaints.
So you're going to do that by registration?
So now...
Well, what are you going to do so that everybody does register? Like, you know, obviously we send our stuff into the fire department here. It's not a problem for us, but there's, you're saying only 40% of us do that. So what kind of fine or something are you going to put in place to make people do that?
Currently in this ordinance, currently in this ordinance, it's $5 to register it and it's a $500 fine if you're caught renting without a registration. So, I mean, we wanted to get people's attention to register.
Will that be sent out with tax bills? I mean, we know that, I don't know. How would you be able to say you received proper notice? I'm just saying, I don't know how you're going to do that.
Because we don't know who they are.
Yeah, so step one with the registration would be to find out with the tax bill. And then where's the, where's the registration going to take place? Is it going to go through the fire department and then notify?
Oh, no, no. It's what a plan.
Goes a planning and then they kind of verify with the fire department.
So each apartment is going to be looked in at Beacon then to figure out who owns it and set it out to...
Most part, we can, I mean...
Yeah, how do you, how do you find out who owns what rental properties in town? How do you do that, Sue?
The county does give a list.
Yeah.
What?
The county has a list.
The county has a list.
Yeah.
And they provide that.
Okay, so you have a list of who owns.
So, how we go, the county, Beacon two, and this highlight, really click on it.
Okay, I didn't know how the city kept track of that.
The city doesn't keep track.
And they don't find fire.
I've got a question.
Fire, fire number five.
Well, that's the apartment that I'm communicating.
That's what I'm talking about. That's all about where we got to start actually. They have to find, that's all the form.
That, that's...
Put in green on that registration.
We would like to have one source of talking at town, so please. I mean, we have many conversations. It's not going to be three on TV.
You have, you have more job in Illinois. I know of one right across the street from me who's owned by an Illinois person.
Well, we would like to have a contact person within 75 months.
Contact those people.
That's why the registration has listed. You have a contact person that's...
They have, they have what they call a property manager here.
That...
But I mean, that's who you have to contact.
I just wanted to say you wanted teeth in your, in your paperwork to go after these people. In Code 36, it says a political subdivision may inspect a rental unit if the political subdivision has reason to believe or receives a complaint that the rental unit does not apply with applicable code requirements.
36 dash one dash what? What's the actual code itself?
36 dash one dash 20 dash three. And then it's C.
Yeah, okay, that's, and that's, give me code 236, but there's a... So the other question is registration. How do we get everybody to register? How do we, how do we, and Mr. Dammey, so Mr. Dammey's the one that brought it up, so I'll let you finish that one.
I just figured where would your registration, because as she said, the communication need between fire, you all, so where would it start? Would they register with you? Would you notify fire or would it go to fire? They notify a person.
One form that could be shared.
Yes, the most sensible.
It's going to be one...
And where would it start is what I'm trying to figure out.
Tax office.
I'm figuring it out. It's going to be...
It's like in the tax office.
Is there a way to put it on the code enforcement site?
There is a way to put it on the My Michigan City site. We don't have a code enforcement site. It'd be crazy.
All right, so part of this problem is the lack of updated technology in all the departments. And they should be, there's technology out there, very simple, that all departments could have access to all the information of fire truck and pull up, to look up who owns this property, who do I call, how many police, you know, calls were at this place, et cetera. There is technology out there. We have to enter the 20th century here at Michigan City. So that is another part of this ordinance. I can't put everything all at once, but that is something that needs to be addressed and I hope it will be addressed soon.
This will need to address that. You can't look up anything online. Well, the form that goes out that I got to register so to confirm that I have a working smoke alarms in my apartment, didn't have any kind of fine included in there. And when I called the fireman, like I said, he's like, ah, there you go. So the fireman can say, well, yeah, you could see, you put in that notice. Yes, there's fine if you don't register, $5 even. I mean, it's something. But the point is, is that there's, they are serious, you're serious about it. You want people to provide contact information. And the fire department needs to convey that, yes, this is serious. We would like you to do this now.
We're merging those registrations. So that's going to be one registration. The fire department says we could just do one form for everything. So it is going to be merged. It's not going to be them and it's most likely going to be planning. So that is... So does everyone want to meet again in a few weeks and kind of discuss where we're going further with this or not? Should we set a date or should we just do that in a few weeks?
What would you then say, we would propose doing something similar to what I said, where you get with Christine, she explains to you the vastness of this so that you can tailor it to understand what type of situation you need to address so that you get a better idea, how many are there, what should we do? And then you would say, oh, well, we think we still need another inspector or we need more legal help in order to facilitate that no one else can live here anymore. Those items would be worked out by you guys that you would then present us because we don't know how to do that.
Yeah, that's part of it too. But again, so now everyone's all rattled about the inspections. If we just hold up on the inspections, focus on the registrations and focus on cleaning up the other properties, I mean, I just want to talk about that and make sure everyone's on the same page with that.
Yep.
Yeah, Chris, how much time would you have or need, you know, to come up with bullet items and, you know, a sheet like this so when we sit down and forget to have another workshop? Okay, here's primar, primar, how do you say that? Primar, yeah. Well, sorry.
It's okay.
What we're, you know, what we're talking about and what we want to do. So we got something to talk about. A month?
Yeah, give me a month.
A month?
I, I, I...
Yeah, okay.
Did this kind of negate the need for ordinance now? I mean, based on what you already...
Based on, based, pretty much at this point, yeah, I'm sure, because, because the biggest complaint from the landlords is why all of us, why, why you own 62 properties? You know, I have never been at any 62 properties. I turn by them, you know, waved and then we talk and stuff like that. He's complained about other properties around. Well, she's got a legitimate, you know, just like anybody else. I've been to your house. I've been to a couple other houses around here, you know. If, you know, if I get complaints with a tenant landlord complaint, I can, and I, like I said, I have five years' worth and I can legitimately, and I'll separate the ones that legitimately, they didn't want to call me back. They didn't want me to do a return inspection and stuff like that. I'm going to look at what landlords they are, what properties they are and stuff like that and maybe we'll target that specific group. Mark Sherman, who used to be part of your landlord group, he wanted to bring it back and kind of exile the ones that are bad or kind of like, you know, give a tongue lashing to the ones that are bad, trying to make you guys, you know, those that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, bring it up to the certain standard as well. I told him I'd be more than happy to meet with that group on a monthly basis or whatever you guys meet and see what we can do to help you improve the conditions of the property, concerns, complaints, you know, adjustments and stuff like that. But I think we've had this tenant landlord complaint form for a long time. It just, we have teeth in it, you know, to go before the Board of Works and, and, you know, it's basically, you know, you go in front of public.
Yeah, isn't it possible that I could actually include that in my lease?
Sure, why not?
It's not on the East Michigan City website. I'll see if it is or not.
A lawyer.
I have a question though. So to answer your question about the ordinance, we still need a registration ordinance. We don't have one. So we need to have a registration ordinance with some teeth. And if I want to put in some things for the grants, I will do that here or maybe in a separate thing. I don't know. But like, I'm going to work on that, but I'm not going to put the inspections in like a mandatory three-year inspection. I can see how that is just too much for the city to handle right now.
And I also want to say too is I, yeah, well, you probably could do that. Is, everyone's got, you know, there's, everyone, there's a lot of people with property there. It's fine. You never say the first, stuff like that. But I think we really do need to do at least one time, walk through, see what you're dealing with. If I walk through a house and I walk through your second house, depends how you know, and after the second house, I don't have any issues or anything like that, maybe we'll just skip on by and know that you're not having, you know, having any issues. I mean, there's going to be people, it's that, the system's not going to be perfect, no matter what. People are going to be intimidated by reporting landlords. It's just a fact of nature. They're going to be freaked out about it and maybe I got, we got to come up with something like I said, to protect landlords, protect the tenants, false accusations, stuff like that. But the landlords and tenants alike both have to keep documentation within somewhere, how the conditions are. This way we can verify that, okay, you know, this tenant destroyed it because you have pictures of before he moved in or this tenant left it, you know, the same way that you got it. And it, so it just, we have to have some kind of even, yeah.
Yeah, starting incrementally, registration, complaint-based, you have forms. That doesn't change the whole structure of the planning department. What you're saying that maybe we can get a beacon here, that will require the hiring of those additional people. So if you begin with this and say, well, look, we've eradicated this much of it and we're doing pretty good, that then if needed and you say, geez, we still haven't changed anything, then you could revisit it again and say, well, what is it that we could do that would allow us to get to where we want to be? So if you start with what you're discussing now, that doesn't change the whole structure of the planning department.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't change. It's still the same manpower, everything else like that. It's still the same landlords.
But it's beneficial because now you will have the registration part and that is a big help in identifying who owns the places.
Right.
I don't think anybody here is a problem with that.
I think, I think, I think we successfully had a pretty good workshop here to put everybody at ease with certain things and stuff like that. I think registration, we just got to come figure out how to get registration out and everybody knows about it, word of mouth, whether it's through a new landlord-based group, through our E Michigan City website and come up with the mechanics for that. So, yeah.
Or to the tax bill.
Also Facebook rental pages too, the Facebook rental pages, the Port County one, Michigan City one.
If people want to meet, I mean, I proposed July 26th is that, it's about a month away. It's a Wednesday evening again. Should we start at 6:00? Because a lot of people came a little bit late. Should we do 6:00 PM?
That's a Wednesday.
Yeah, July 26th.
Yeah, far enough out to be okay.
Yeah, but we're getting out.
Don't give me enough time, Chris.
Don't wait.
Yeah, there should be.
All right, all right.